This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, June the 28th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Brad Sullivan, Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, it's a joy to be here today. God bless you. Let's all go to the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. You have given us, for this is the day that you have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, I thank you for the leaders of the Mobile City Council and the people they represent, the plans made and the laws passed here impact our city. I pray that these men and women will seek your wisdom above all things. The Bible declares that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. Let there be a holy fear and reverence for you and your will in this place that will release your wisdom to ensure peace and prosperity. Lord, I pray that these leaders will stand for righteousness. You said in your word that righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. Let these men and women always choose doing what is right over doing what is expedient. Also pray that you will give them the strength and courage to lead by principle and not by political pressure. Lord, you warned us in Scripture, woe to those who call good evil and evil good. I pray you will usher in a new era of peace and prosperity that flows from righteous leadership. And let us start today with these leaders. Brother God, we beseech you on behalf of our city. Our society is in desperate need of restoration and I fervently pray that you will pour out your spirit and revive us again. Do a great work in this city, Lord, and send a wave of revival and prosperity to Mobile. I ask you for the increase of jobs, businesses, corporations, and industry. I also ask for the churches to flourish and have greater impact in our communities. Now, God, move in the heart and life of every leader here today. I pray your hand of protection be upon them. May their hearts be open to your leadership and guidance as they lead and guide our city. Thank you for their sacrifice and service, and I pray this in the powerful and the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Hey, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, I ask you to put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office prior to the council meeting. About 2:00 PM on that Thursday, the subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified and retained to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. To address the council, a bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of June 21st. So moved.
Second. And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody here. Appreciate you being, taking time out of your schedule to come join us today. I have three announcements and then at the end of the announcements, Joe Snowden will introduce an employee of the month. Is that right? You don't? Okay. We do not have an employee of the month at this time. So after the three announcements, the first has to do with the city of Mobile has received a $340,000 grant from ADM. That grant will establish a third recycling drop-off center. It will also be used to promote public education about recycling and help us understand the feasibility of additional recycling services across Mobile County in the future. I want to give thanks to the cities of Chickasaw, Valabatia, Creole, Adolphin Island, Saraland, Satsuman, Sims. They've also signed, owned to support the feasibility study that this grant will fund. The second announcement, it has to do with the Fourth of July. Our Mobile Parks and Recreation Department are hosting an independent day extravaganza celebrating the Fourth of July. We hope that you will join us at Cooper Riverside Park and Mighty Grove Park on Monday from 4:00 to 9:30 PM. That's at Cooper Riverside Park and Mighty Grove Park. There'll be live music, DJ, bounce houses, games, and an epic fireworks show that'll start at 9:00 PM sharp. The event is free for the entire family. The third announcement is the last week, and last week, we joined the Mobile Chamber in rolling out a new initiative to help support local businesses and keep dollars in our local economy. Mobile First is a formalized pledge that new and existing companies can make to show they prioritize local businesses when bidding out projects. The more dollars spent here with local businesses means more dollars will stay here. As industries locate in this region or expand their existing footprints, we always want to see our local businesses sharing in that growth and success. Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much.
A monthly finance report.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Counsel. Okay, pleased to be here today to talk about the results for May. Actually, May was a good month compared to March and April, where we had actually turned into negative results. But just to recap for the month, we had a good sales tax revenue. We pulled in $17.8 million against a budget of $16.3. So year-to-date, we're $130 million of revenue from sales tax compared to $118 million in the budget. Total revenues for the month, for the month, we were $24.2 million, and year-to-date, we're at $223 million. And so we're running about $19 million overall ahead of our budget for revenue for the year. A couple of highlights are, you know, taxes are ahead of plan, as I said, but room taxes are up by about $4 million, and sales tax is also up by about $5 million better than what was in the budget. So that's been a real good outcome for us this year. The simplified sales use tax that we've talked about before, that continues to come in a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. It's good that we got the higher revenue, but it just means that more people are buying online and we're losing some of that revenue that we might normally get because of the sales use tax. Let's see, our costs, our costs were good this month. Public safety, we're running about $6.7 million better than planned. Public works, about $6.2 million better than planned for the year. And then overall, for all cost centers, about $18.7 million better than what we had budgeted in cost. And then, let's see, overall, our balance sheet looks good. It did change this month because, as you know, we moved $16 million out of the surplus into capital, so that has affected, but we still have a surplus fund of about $145 million. Overall, I guess I would say that, you know, some of the big issues that we have going on right now for us right now is the budget. We're kind of at that stage where we're reviewing the budget after the review of all the executive directors and kind of tuning them up a little bit. We'll be working on that for a couple more weeks. So I think that's encouraging. One thing, though, that we do see and we talk about a lot internally, and I know that you all are aware of this, is, you know, what's the impact of the economy on some of the activities that we have going on in the city? And inflation is a big one, particularly as it pertains to public works and purchases. And that's going to continue to haunt us for some time and we're going to have to probably make some adjustments in our thinking as we go into this next year and account for some of that in terms of how we finalize the budget. The rest of the economy is pretty much the same as it has been. You know, the interest rates are going up. Let's see, inflation is still high, but overall, we're still doing pretty well. And I'm optimistic that throughout the summer, we should at least be doing about the same level we have, or give or take a couple million dollars in revenue, and we'll see how the year ends. Any questions?
Counsel?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hope. All right, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second. And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave the noise ordinance on July the 1st through the 4th. Up two on July 1st through the 4th, and these are both on Marine Street.
They're good.
And July 4th on Charles Street, July 16th on Riverside Drive, and July 2nd on Donald Street. And July 23rd on LeChur Road, LeChur Drive. So moved.
Second. And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Clarissa Perkins. She's not coming. Okay, Bill Boswell.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman and Councilwoman, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bill Boswell. I reside at 1609 Government Street. I am speaking to you today on behalf of the Government Street Collaborative. That is the coalition of downtown and midtown neighborhood organizations. As you may be aware, this past Friday, the city of Mobile broke its promise to the neighborhoods represented by the Government Street Collaborative when it cut down three of the protected live oaks on Broad Street. Given my time is brief today, I'll ask you to read the history in front of you over the last several years. Today, we ask the following. Establish an open line of communication with the Government Street Collaborative as well as other neighborhood citizens groups to discuss the future design and completion of the Broad Street project, especially where it impacts heritage trees with the goal of preventing the removal of these trees. Replace any live oak or other heritage tree that has been or will be removed with three trees of the same species planted in an area close to the removal site or an alternative site approved by the Tree Commission in consultation with representatives of the historic districts and the Government Street Collaborative. Involve the city of Mobile Tree Commission in all discussions on issues relevant to the removal of heritage trees. To that end, I would ask the council to fill any vacancies you might have on that commission. In 2019, the Government Street Collaborative and Mayor Stimson's administration met and made an agreement on the protection of 87 live oaks slated for removal on Broad Street. Cooperation and communication between the city and the neighborhoods made it possible to find a compromise on a very sensitive subject. The agreement has been a successful endeavor until fortunately about two weeks ago, when the city in a last-minute meeting informed us streets needed to be cut down. We were told to send in our concerns, ideas, and proposals, and the city would contact us. We sent our emails, reached out to the mayor. The city never contacted us, never replied to our concerns or proposals. This past Friday, I witnessed the destruction of these streets. The arrogance on part of the administration to ignore our concerns, to break their promise to us, as has disheartened and quite frankly, excuse the French, pissed us off. It is not just these three trees we lost that are our only concern. It is the trees down south Broad that are now in jeopardy as the city begins that phase of construction. And it is the total lack of respect that the city has shown to its citizens. I implore the mayor to once again renew our faith in your administration, meet with us, communicate with us, and let us protect the future of this great city. I thank the council for their work, and I thank the administration for their work. But please, let's all work together to try to avoid this type of situation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell.
Gina Finnegan.
Thank you all so much for hearing us today. We're here to ask for your help in protecting the vital services and missions served by the Downtown Moore YMCA. For decades, this branch has brought together Mobilians of every ethnicity.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can we get your full name and your address?
Oh, sorry. Gina O'Brien-Finnegan, 1306 Dolphin Street, 36604.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you all so very much for hearing us today. We're here to ask for your help in protecting the vital services and missions served by the Downtown Moore YMCA. For decades, this branch has brought together Mobilians of every ethnicity, every income level, age, profession, and physical capability. With the closing of the Moore Branch, the YMCA of South Alabama is abandoning the Mobilians who are dependent upon it. The Moore Branch is closing for financial reasons, but not for Moore's financial problems. According to a document review, Moore is closing because YSL is losing so much money on the brand-new Snook branch in Foley. More than $400,000 in operating costs in 2021 alone, and it wasn't even open yet. The stated reason for the closing is that Moore couldn't pull its weight financially. Please don't be fooled. The Mobile Y lost income because certain members of YSL's leadership did not want it to succeed. YSL used COVID as a cover to enact policies that ensured financial problems for Moore. Moore was opened only 20 hours a week for most of last year, from 10 to 2, shutting out all of the morning and evening groups, including a lot of city employees who exercised before or after work, such as the firefighters who were there every evening playing basketball, sharing the court with the kids who were also there every evening. Each of the other branches, by the way, was open 73.5 hours a week. Also, YSL's board and CEO were presented with a detailed plan that would have immediately increased revenues for Moore. They ignored it. You can be certain the proceeds of the sale of our valuable Water Street property are not intended to stay in Mobile. YSL Board Chairman Roseanne Radke said at a board meeting, "The sale of a building that is not profitable could be helped raise needed funds to repair other Y facilities." They crowed with delight over the gorgeous basketball floors, pool mechanical equipment, even the ceiling tiles that were removed from Heron Chandler and given to the Snook branch. Heron Chandler suddenly closed last fall because YSL didn't even bother to maintain its roof. But none of us came here today because they're taking our stuff. No, we're here because the community at the Moore Y has deep, deep roots in all of our hearts, and YSL is dispersing our community and taking away vital services. This community, these relationships, these regular positive interactions among Mobilians of every background have created bonds that have enriched each of us personally and that also bring strength and goodness to our city. So we ask you, our city leaders, to please support and protect a mobile institution that has served countless Mobilians since 1895. And if Moore must close, we ask for you to help us use the sales proceeds to form our own independent Mobile YMCA. Thank you for hearing us. And I have copies for you all.
Thank you.
Colette Rosenstein.
My name's Colette Marie Rosenstein. I live at 309 Dexter Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, 36604. Good morning.
Good morning.
I stand here today to ask for the city council and the city of Mobile's support to keep the Downtown Moore YMCA open. The Moore Branch is much more than a place to workout. It is a place where strong relationships are made and fostered, where people from all walks of life can connect and support each other, each other in a way to grow a healthy spirit, mind, and body, not to mention all the programs it has offered for the members in the community. For example, top-of-the-line fitness classes and health programs for all stages of life. It's provided childcare for parents and caregivers while they use the facility, as well as provided monthly kids' night out events. Meals for anyone under 18 years old every summer through partnership with Feeding the Gulf Coast. It also provided a practice and game facility for local community youth basketball programs. Annually, it provided three fundraising events attended by members and the community benefiting the YMCA's family and youth programs. Partnered with Trinity, it partnered with Trinity Family and Deep Roots Ministry in Trinity Gardens to help provide resources such as school uniforms and tablets for their after-school program. This is just to name a few. The Moore YMCA is a safe and fun place for the entire family to be part of. COVID and the repercussions that followed its onset obviously negatively affected our downtown businesses, business areas as a whole, which included a lot of Moore's membership base. However, there has seemingly been a little done by the YSL leadership since then to adjust to these changes and seek out strategies that could help boost membership and ensure the YMCA's continued presence in our downtown and Mobile area. Several months ago, the Heron Chandler branch of the YMCA was closed on June 30, 2022. Does that mean I'm done?
Oh.
Okay. The Moore Branch is set to close its doors. Since the only two Mobile branches of the YMCA of South Alabama will be closed, the various programs that support the mission and vision statements of the YMCA will no longer be available to serve our community. Moore has been serving this community for over 127 years. This closure of this branch will be devastating to so many. The YMCA mission statement reads, "To put Christian principles into practice through programs that build healthy spirit, mind, and body for all." The YMCA vision reads, "The YMCA is committed to creating stronger communities and a more equitable society for all. Our vision is a future where all people get the support they need, for this vision is an important component to our downtown community and city as a whole." I am pleading with the city council. The mayor and the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ashley Kleinschroed.
Hello, my name is Ashley Kleinschroed. I reside at 3112 Marcia Drive, 36605, your district, CJ Small. I'm here on behalf of members of the YMCA. I don't think, I'm not sure what y'all could do, but I'm just here to say that we need a gym downtown. There's no other gym other than the YMCA that's open to the public, and now that it's gone, or on Thursday it'll be gone, we won't have anywhere to go other than maybe Pro Health that's up the street. It's going to take business out of downtown, and downtown is growing exponentially, and we need a place to go. I go on my lunch break. I used to go after work before the YMCA cut their hours back. And if we can't open up another YMCA, maybe we could have a private entity, you know, invest in this area to help us open up a gym. And if anybody is remotely interested in that, I would be more than happy to do anything that I can to help. Thank you.
Michael Hamilton.
Mr. Hamilton available? President.
Good morning. My name is Ken O'Hanlon. I'm at 52.
Your name is Ken O'Hanlon. Okay, we ask for Mr. Michael Hamilton.
Yeah, he decided not to.
Yeah, unfortunately, he's the one who signed up, and he's the one that has to speak.
Okay, well, he tried to pass the buck to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do apologize. I do apologize. Yeah, but I'm sorry.
All right, well, I'm sorry I bothered y'all.
No, you didn't bother. Thank you.
Brian Green.
Mr. Green available? Mr. Green present?
I think Mr. Green is the last speaker of the YMCA, and just to the administration, not too sure exactly who owns the building of the YMCA, but if anything that the city could do or look at, or can even lead some private investors to look at that particular building, if all possible, you know, try to just see if we can do something to it. But we just have another abandoned building downtown, if it's possible.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President. Mr. Carroll. The city of Mobile has, you know, and it's unfortunate with the Moore YMCA, I frequent the place myself, but the city, we have, what, six, seven recreation centers? I can't even remember them all, that have everything in them except for racquetball court and fitness center with weights. To say that we don't have any other access to gyms, we do. There could be a way to partner with some of our recreation centers in order to close the gap in the use without having a YMCA right now. There's also other things that we could look at that would require somewhat of public-private partnership. But for those of us that are my age, VIA is also a facility that has a very stout workout facility there that has workout rooms, basketball courts, pickleball courts, health center, health uses. So we do have other facilities that can be used that are downtown. VIA is right on Dolphin Street. So, but as we go forward, I will kind of take a look at this and see what we can do with other facilities that we have in the downtown area that will help us close the gap on a facility of use where we can go. It's unfortunate the city of Mobile does not own the YMCA or that building. So our influence there would only be to put money into a structure or facility or business that we currently don't own by possibly a performance contract. But I don't, I don't know where we are, how viable that is. But with relationships that I have over the years to our own public facilities, I think that using our parks and recreation and enhancing them could go a long way also if indeed the YMCA or the Moore Branch does close permanently.
Madam Clerk?
Reverend Bobby Brown.
Good morning, I'm Reverend Bobby Brown. I reside at 3651 Winley Court. Councilman Reynolds is my councilperson, here to speak on redistricting. I'm a product of the '60s. In 1968, when I was in architectural school at Tuskegee, Thaddeus M. and Associates came to Tuskegee and presented a plan for redistricting, not redistricting, for urban renewal in Mobile. Well, grandmama used to say, "If you're not at the table, you're on the menu." And what happened was the people that the urban renewal was affecting didn't know anything about it. The only thing that we are asking is to be at the table for redistricting. And because of what occurred during that time, people don't trust the city of Mobile, not African-Americans, when it comes to redistricting, because it disrupted three different communities, because they weren't at the table. And so the only thing that we are asking is, we want to be at the table so we'll know what is going to happen, so that we will have input. But presently, to be honest, we don't feel that we are at the table, and because of that, we feel that we are on the menu. We're being shifted out, and being shifted out means that we don't trust. That's a bad thing to be in a position where you believe that the city is seeing that we want a one Mobile, but we have separate tables. So the only thing I'm asking this morning, please let us get at the table.
Thank you.
Reverend David Edwards.
Good morning.
Morning.
Administration, City Council, Mr. President. My name is David Edwards. I reside at 670 Fisher Street, 36607, where my outstanding councilman is Councilman Corey Penn. I'm here to speak about the redistricting and the community coalition map that you have before you. This map is incredibly close to the one put forward by the mayor. With just a handful of small changes, to bring the city closer to meeting the legal obligation, it's under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act. It also includes tweaks to address concerns raised by the members of this body. Now that we have a map, which was developed by working together to ensure everyone's concern are addressed, we hope you will seriously consider and vote to adopt this map and in a timely manner. There's been complaints along the way that the process and rhetoric has been divisive. This community coalition map has been the opposite of that. It was created in the spirit of coalition. It was created by groups across the city coming together to develop a fair amount that would truly move our communities and the city forward. We asked for input from this body, and we made the changes requested to ensure concerns were addressed. This is how this process should be and how we should develop such maps, which will determine the trajectory of our communities and as a result, our city for at least the next decade. By finally providing proper representation, we will give our city the best chance to grow and to thrive. We encourage you to adopt them for the sake of our citizens and the city, because we really want Mobile to grow and thrive. We need to work together. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, before we move on, I want to go back to Mr. Boswell's presentation on the trees. And I'm a little bit concerned that of all the things on here, it just, it's grating on me that there was an agreement to open communication, and there's a trust that goes along with that, that they feel was violated. I'd like to give the administration an opportunity to provide some feedback on why this organization, as I look through all of the records on this, they reached out numerous times to try and get some clarity in why there was no communication back, number one. Number two, there's some question with regards to a number of other trees now south on Broad Street. Is there a risk and threat that more of those trees are going to be taken out than what was presented to this group before? Obviously, trees are an important aspect to our city. And I know when I have visitors from, from out of state and out of city come here, the first thing they mention is what a beautiful city we have because of the trees, and I think that's the concern that we see voiced. So I would like the administration to address the concerns that was presented to the city council with regards to the communication void, and then to the concerns with regards to the trees on the south side of Broad Street. Thank you.
Mr. President, the, Mr. Boswell is correct that back in March of 2019, the administration did meet with the Government Street Collaborative to identify and try to preserve as many of the oak trees, the live oak trees, and the heritage trees along the Broad Street corridor as the tiger grant began. The, what happened as we got to the south side of Government Street, between the roundabout and government on Broad Street, and specifically on the west side of it, is as they took the curb out and they took off the road surface, the concrete surface, they found that the root system was pretty elaborate. We went above and beyond trying to preserve the trees in that area and had a hydro excavation done, which cost the city about $30,000 to expose the root structures that were underneath the roadbed. We brought in not just our arborist, which is Peter Toler, but two other arborists to take a look at these root structures. Most of the trees were able to be saved with a little bit of reconfiguration of that area. Three of them unfortunately could not be saved because the damage to the root structure would kill the trees. And so we did reach out on the 16th of June to the Government Street Collaborative, and they met on June the 17th to discuss what the findings were of the three certified arborists that the trees were in peril or danger of dying and would create a safety issue for us. What I do not think happened very well was the follow-up to that conversation. The trees were eventually removed last Friday. And so that is my responsibility on the lack of follow-up, but we are reaching out to Mr. Boswell to make sure that we continue to collaborate with the Government Street Collaboration on future projects as we move south on Broad Street. We do not know exactly until we take those roadbeds up, the sidewalks and curbs, what those root structures look like, but we'll make sure that we do stay in touch with the Government Street Collaborative, so that they are aware of what the issues are as we go forward. But that's, that's my responsibility and be glad to make sure that we're communicating more effectively with them in the future.
A question. First question is, does the city have a plan of avoidance for, I mean, RCP reinforced concrete pipe that run through the root structure where we can back up beyond the root structure, divert the pipe with a junction box, and go around the structure and realign themselves with the existing drainage system?
Again, every effort was made, and you know, Mr. Carroll, that by providing these 90-degree turns, you're actually going to do some impediment to the drainage system, but it wasn't the drainage that caused the issue to the structural root system, it's the roadbed. There was no way to avoid the actual roadbed.
So the, you're saying that the existing root structure was out into the center of Broad Street?
That's correct, 12 to 14 feet away from the base of the tree.
So you're saying that the roots were beyond the canopy of the tree at the time?
That's, that's not beyond the canopy. I'm saying that the structural root system expanded out 12 to 14 feet from the base of the tree.
But they were not beyond the canopy of the tree, meaning they could have been treated and turned down?
I don't, I don't know how to explain it other than 12 to 14 feet from the base of the tree into the roadway, and so it was in the roadbed. And these are the structural root systems.
Okay, well, I think that when you say making a 90-degree turn with a RCP pipe, I'm very familiar how pipe are laid. And there is a way of avoidance that can be done to have a new piping system avoid the trees if we're prepared to do that. It simply involves a, a casual sloping to left or right with a junction box, with the invert inside the junction box and reconnecting, and takes a little bit of time to get there. It might be a little bit more non-cost effective, but it's possible. So, I mean, I think that in the future, we might need to have some types of plans in place if we intend to save older trees. Further down Dolphin Street at the corner of Charleston and Broad there, 1, 2, 3, 4, 200, 300-year oak trees. I would hate to see this happen again if we have to take the bike lanes down, further down Broad Street. Also, during the Bring Back Broad Street initiative, there were, I can't tell you how many oak trees planted in that project going down Broad Street for future growth so that we could do the same thing on Broad Street that has happened over numerous years on Government Street, Houston Street, Dolphin Street with the tree canopies. You know, the, the intent is to protect the tree there and let it grow in size. Next question is, is does the city have any type of replacement rules for damaged trees? If we take out one tree, then how many trees are we responsible for replacing? Do we have that type of system in place?
You know, there is a right tree at the right place plan, yes. But then again, it has to be the right tree for the right environment that we're going to place it in. And so there is a tree replacement plan, correct. And there is a landscaping plan for Broad Street.
So I think that, so that everyone knows, because I heard the question today, that if we take one tree down, especially if it's a heritage oak or a live oak, then our intent is to replace them with the character of the city with additional trees beyond what we've taken down. I hope that, that is our intent. And the reason why I'm delving into this, because Friday I took the brunt of the phone calls from the community saying they tore, they ripped these trees down, and all Friday afternoon I had to answer these calls. I don't know if you got them or not, but I was unaware that trees had been taken down either at the time. You know, and it would have been just the extended courtesy to give me a heads up so I could be prepared to answer the calls of constituent, which I was not at the time. But I hope that we have a plan for this in the future so that if we do lose our heritage oaks, that we have a replacement plan. The other thing is, is try looking up this weekend to see if Mobile had been designated a tree city by the National Forestry Society or whoever else. And if we're a tree city, then we're obligated by, by those rules to replace heritage oaks and overstorey trees that are taken down inadvertently on major thoroughfare. So are we a tree city?
Yes, we are. The oldest tree city in Alabama.
Okay. So at some point then we'll replace those trees that are needed with what we need to, need to do by law. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over 64036, rezoned property located on the east side of North University Boulevard at the east terminus of Laban Drive from R1 to B2.
Move to layover for two weeks.
Second.
Properly moved to second layover for two weeks, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Vice President.
This is an area where there is a proposal to build a, an entertainment and conference venue. It is in an R1 area and across the street from neighborhoods. I have spoken with the developer, and she is in the process of holding a community meeting. So I want to be sure to give her time to hold the meeting and take any questions and try to answer any concerns before we move forward with this. I had initially thought one week might be enough, just kind of depends on, you know, her scheduling, but with the 4th of July holiday, let's go ahead and make it two weeks, just to be on the safe side.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm to layover for two weeks.
CIP resolutions held over 01536, authorized agreement with Aldott for traffic signal upgrades, University Boulevard and Oshel Road. 09537, reallocate monies from Capital Project Grant Match Traffic Engineering to grant fund traffic signal upgrade university.
So move.
Second.
And properly move in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Resolutions held over 01538, authorized foreign trade zone operating agreement with GS Operating LLC doing business as Frontier Technologies for property located at Foreign Trade Zone 82. 08539, approved purchase order to Image Trend for annual software subscription renewal. 08540, approved purchase order to France for annual subscription renewal for timekeeping and scheduling software. 08541, approved purchase order to North American Fire Equipment for hydraulic rescue equipment. 21542, authorized contract with Convergent Technologies for server and security camera maintenance at Mobile, Alabama Cruise Terminal. 21543, authorized contract with Robert J. Baggett for gangway preventative maintenance and inspection technicians, Mobile, Alabama Cruise Terminal. 21544, authorized contract with Mycore Inc., construction for Bugler Sculpture Base at Memorial Park. 21545, authorized contract with Bogart for design and engineering services for Brookley by the Bay. 6546 and 547 are authorizing release of claims and settlement agreements.
So move.
Second.
And properly move in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Consent resolutions being introduced 03549 through 6553.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Second. And properly move in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
03549, appoint David White to the Mobile Airport Authority. 58550, declare Wees Noxious Group 1630. 6551, 552, and 553 are determined appropriations to Vivian's Door Gulf Coast Ethnic and Heritage Jazz Festival production, and Hillsdale Heights Homeowners Association serve a public purpose and approve payment.
So move.
Second.
And properly move in a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Days.
Item 03549 is to appoint David White to the Mobile Airport Authority. I've known Mr. White for some time now. I have the highest opinion of his probity. He's been involved in a number of different organizations where he's provided excellent advice and support, and I think he'll make an admirable addition to the Mobile Airport Authority and happy to see his name foot forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Vice President.
I too just want to congratulate David on his appointment, and we look forward to working with you on this, so just welcome aboard.
I guess I'd be missed not to say anything. He's my financial advisor too, so. I guess I'd be rude not to vote for him this, this morning. He might mess me up next year, so. Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Resolutions being introduced 08554 through 08557.
Per council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week with the exception of 08-557.
Need a move.
Move.
Second.
And properly move in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
08557, approved purchase order to SHI International for citizen engagement software and one-year subscription.
So move.
And properly move in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Announcements.
District 5, District, Councilman Days.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce that the schedule for the budget considerations for fiscal year '23, we expect to receive the draft budget from the administration on August 20th pursuant to the Zogby Act. On August 23rd, we will issue the call for a public hearing on the budget, which is also required by statute. That public hearing will occur on September 6th. On August 30, the Finance Committee will meet to review the budget with the administration. This will be a working session. There will be no public comment taken. On September 6th, as I said, we will have the public hearing on the budget, and on September 13, we will vote on the budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
District 2, Councilman Carroll. District 6, Councilman Jones.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I hope everybody has a great 4th of July weekend coming up. Should be a great time to celebrate our country and the city. I know the city parks and wrecks, like the mayor alluded, has, has got a lot of activities planned throughout the city, so make sure you, you go find that. And, you know, we put a lot of expense and effort into that, and hopefully we'll have a great turnout this coming weekend. Thursday evening, 6:30 PM at the Connie Hudson Center, if you live in Carriage Hills or Asheville, we'll be meeting to discuss the Milk House Creek subdivision. And then on the 19th, we'll have our next quarterly District 6 community meeting for everybody in District 6. Look forward to seeing you there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Councilman 4. Oh, District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District 1, Councilman Corey Penn.
No announcements.
Wow. What about you, uh? District 7, Vice President Gregory.
I'm feeling that fear pressure not to have any announcements. Just very quickly, I was able to attend the Distinguished Young Women Program on Saturday evening, and, and I presented the First Runner-Up Award, which went to Miss Alabama. It was a wonderful program. 50 young women from around, you know, around the country were there. Their parents and friends all flew in to see them. They spent two to three days here in the city, so it was a terrific program, exceptional young women, and we should all just be very proud that we continue to have this national program in the city of Mobile. They just celebrated 65 years here in the city with this program. So I was very pleased to be there and was great to see so many local supporters there as well. And that will do it from District 7.
And that will do it from District 7.
Uh, thank you, Vice President. And I also had the opportunity on Friday morning to join the Distinguished Young Women at the mayor's breakfast. Uh, I had an opportunity to introduce the speaker. Great opportunity, uh, great fun that morning. And, uh, it was excited to see all the young ladies and the people out in the visitors in Mobile, Alabama. And I'd like to wish all the citizens in District 3 and the city of Mobile a happy Fourth and safe Fourth of July Independence Day. And it's also good to see our former assistant clerk in the audience. I thought she retired, but I guess she missed us. Welcome home. Anything from the administration? Anything else from this council?
I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
And properly move in second in discussion? All in?